We, yeah, Thursday will be good. I'll be here all day.
This meeting of the Richlands Town Council will now come to order. Please let us stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for the opportunity to assemble in our country and in our town to conduct the business of this town in the best interest that we possibly know how and in the best interest of all the people that live here and all the people who live around us that we affect. We pray for your guidance and your blessings as we pray tonight and as we bear in mind where we are in this time of our lives, let us think about tomorrow, which is September the 11th, and the horrible tragedy that occurred years ago. We pray for those who were the victims, we pray for their families, we pray for those who have longstanding illnesses from that of all kinds, we pray for the police, the fire, the EMS, all the first responders who reacted to that terrible tragedy and whose lives, some of them paid with their own lives and some paid in the long process. But we're all paying, but we're thankful to you that the United States stands as a free and democratic country. For these blessings, we thank you, dear God. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel, before you, we have our agenda and packet. And at this time, we are asking for additions or deletions to the agenda. Before we go any further, is there anyone present who would like to speak under unscheduled public comments? It's a three-minute period. Under scheduled public comments, we have Mr. George Shelton, Jr. Mr. Shelton, are you here? Okay, well, he might show up. Okay, anyone who would like to speak under unscheduled public comments? Yes, Ernest? Please add Ernest Edgell. And it's E-D-G-E-L-L? Okay. And yes, sir, your name, please, Mr. Cordell?
Mark.
Mark Cordell, right? Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak under unscheduled public comments? Okay, hearing, yes, sir?
I would like to request one addition to the agenda. Under, under agenda items, I would like to add an agenda item K, and this is the Quantum Contract. Mr. Thomas and the representatives from Quantum Power have been working over the past several weeks to be able to get this contract ready. I believe this contract was sent to all of council several weeks ago for review. We need to have that approved this evening so that we can continue to move forward. If we could add that as item K under the agenda.
That's under K, under item Roman numeral nine K. So please add Quantum Power Contract. Is there anyone else, last call, who would like to speak under unscheduled public comments? Anyone else? Okay, there being no one else. Are any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Members of council? Okay, Rick makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second? Gary makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion to approve the agenda as amended? Being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We're now on Roman numeral five, authorization to pay the bills. And we have before us the check registers. And so are there any questions regarding the check register that council would like to ask? Jan?
Number 16139. I was just curious as to what that is, Appalachian aggregates.
This is stone that we have purchased from Appalachian aggregates. I'm not exactly sure which project this was in relation to. We purchase a good bit of Crestwood Stone from them to be able to do different projects.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions regarding the check register? Being no other questions, is there a motion to authorize the manager to pay the bills?
Yes, sir.
Rick makes the motion. Is there a second? And Gary makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion to authorize the manager to pay the bills? There being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We're now on Roman numeral five, authorization to pay the bills. And we have before us the check registers. And so are there any questions regarding the check register that council would like to ask? Jan?
Number 16139. I was just curious as to what that is, Appalachian aggregates.
This is stone that we have purchased from Appalachian aggregates. I'm not exactly sure which project this was in relation to. We purchased a good bit of Crestwood Stone from them to be able to do different projects.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions regarding the check register?
This is stone that we have purchased from Appalachian aggregates. I'm not exactly sure which project this was in relation to. We purchased a good bit of Crestwood Stone from them to be able to do different projects.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions regarding the check register? Being no other questions, is there a motion to authorize the manager to pay the bills?
Yes, sir.
Rick makes the motion. Is there a second? And Gary makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion to authorize the manager to pay the bills? There being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
The motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Now we're on Roman numeral six. This is to approve minutes. Minutes of July 9th, 2024, regular scheduled meeting. And July 23rd, 2024, special call meeting, August 13th, 2024, the public hearing. And August 13th, 2024, the regular scheduled meeting. So have you had an opportunity to look over these minutes, everyone? I only have one small correction, and it's a spelling, Edgell, E-D-G-E-L-L. Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
There is a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
On all sets?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a second by Laura. Any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. These are approved minutes. Next, we have Roman numeral seven, scheduled public comments. This is a five-minute maximum. George Shelton, Mr. Shelton, are you present? George Shelton, Jr.? Would he be in the hall by any chance? Mr. Shelton appears not to be present, so we should move on. We have unscheduled comments, unscheduled public comments. This is a three-minute maximum. So first, is Ernest Edgell, Ernest, please come forth? Please.
206 Terry Drive. I want to compliment the police department on being out and slowing the speeders down. We need more of that.
Yes, sir.
And is there something that could be done about all that trash on Veterans Drive?
I would defer to the manager, but are you talking about debris that gets blown around or thrown out of cars?
Thrown out of cars.
I'm sure that efforts are made for it, but I'll defer to the manager for that one. Ernest?
Mayor, we're in the process of trying to hire a beautification person for the town. This beautification person will be over our community service workers, picking up trash at the parks and at the trash pickles throughout downtown. My public works team has on at least three occasions, the summer gone and done litter, clean up all around Veterans Drive. Unfortunately, it seems to be an area that people choose to litter. But we are trying to do our very best to be able to keep that litter under control.
What could be done to retrain those litters?
That is a question that is, I'm not sure we're going to be able to answer this evening, sir.
Okay, keep it in mind. And is there some ordinance about leaving your trash cans out all week, other than on Trash Pickup Day?
Ernest, I don't know about an ordinance. Again, I will defer to the manager or the attorney for an ordinance of such.
There's not an ordinance about leaving your trash can out?
Well, some of my neighbors, not right next to me, but on Crestwood Drive, they put them out and they're always out. That looks trashy. We've got a nice community here in the town, and they need to get a message or something about that.
Well, I'm sure that they will hear this and maybe take heed, hopefully.
I hope they do. I hope they recognize me.
I'm sure.
And another thing, there's, I notice in our communities, there's a lot of people parking halfway in the street.
Ernest, my only, you mean like in public parking spaces?
No, there's no public parking spaces on the street in Hidden Valley.
Oh, okay. I can't address that one. I'll defer again to the manager.
And before we were in the town, I had some guests and I told them to park in the driveway and they parked out on the street and a sheriff deputy come by and made them move. So.
Well, I think we could convey that to our police department.
In some, in some areas, that is a hazard, because especially on that hill on Terry Drive, the way people drive down it and some of the other hills.
Thank you, Ernest.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Curry, we have a member of the police department, a leader in the police department here, and do, thanks, man, I appreciate it.
Okay, did you take note, man? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Curry?
Yes?
Mr. Edgell, I would recommend you call, you know, if you see that. I think sometimes there's a lot of, there's a lot of town to patrol, and Matt might speak to this, that it'd probably be a lot easier if you called it in. Also, you have a, one of our newer officers is your neighbor now, too, so that might help as well. But if you give them a ring, I would bet that they would come up there and do something about that. I think that's probably the easiest thing. It's, sometimes it's, you might see something that the police department might not see, but if you'll take the time to call, I think that would make a difference. I would just call. Call that in when you see it, and that's what I've been told. And Chief Holt, you know, if there's an issue or problem or something, we'll call that in. I promise they'll address it. I've never not called anything in that they did not address. I feel like they will 100% address that for you.
That's good, counsel.
It's, there's still a non-emergency number. It's 276-964-9134. 9134.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Did you get it, Ernest? Okay, thank you. Next, Mark Cordell, Mr. Cordell?
My name's Mark Cordell. I live on 129 Honaker Road, Big Creek. And I've got a problem. It's been going on, I'm going to say, five years. I have talked to council members about this issue before. The last time I spoke to a council member, pictures were taken. I was assured that it would be addressed, but the problem is, these neighbors, when they drink a can of pop and throw the can out the yard, they got tires piled up. They have a dumpster up there now, but they're using it to put their trash from the house in it. The trash is still out the yard. They've even got a porta potty up there now. And I know that OSHA, if OSHA come and check that they're not conforming to OSHA regulations. And so when I'm sitting out on my back deck and I've got a smell of that when the wind blows along the way, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm, I got another neighbor in front of me. He's just assembling a vehicle. All the parts are getting piled up right in front of my yard. I can look out the front door and that's what I'm looking at. And I'm pretty sure that's a violation of town ordinances.
Do you say cars?
Yes.
Are they tagged or just?
I don't know. They've got, it's a truck, one of them's a truck, got the bed tore off of it, and, you know, and I hate, hate to be, I hate to be the bad guy, but all of this going on around me is having a negative impact on the value of my property.
I don't take it to be negative. I don't think anybody here does. What I hear right now, too, concerns citizens about the aesthetics of the town and the quality of life. And my thinking is, you, we gave your address, you gave your address for the benefit of the clerk, and but doing that, that helps us. So perhaps I would suggest that the PD, the police, could especially check on the automobiles that are questionable.
Well, you know, I know these people, I'm not going to say they're bad people, but their housekeeping practices leave a lot to be desired.
Yes, sir.
And anybody can keep, you know, I don't, I don't want a quarter million dollar home, but I take a lot of pride in making sure my house and my yard is mowed and cleaned and neat and presentable. And, you know, and if I was to decide to put it on the market, which I've been thinking about, these two residences next to me have a tremendous impact on the value of my property. And so I, it's time, it's time it gets dealt with.
Well, I would suggest, may I suggest, I'll pass this on to the manager to ask the patrolman, whoever do this, to particularly to look about the automobiles. And he's given you his card. And as far as the trash, unfortunately, our time is up, unfortunately, and it's really unfortunate. Not everybody will do what you do, but I don't disagree when you have untidy property around yours, it affects not only the property value, but it affects how you feel in your, the quality of your life and the value of your property. And if you move, I hope you stay in Richlands. Thank you.
Well, I don't know, I've got, got an opportunity to buy a little farm down in Russell County. I'm looking at it pretty hard right now, but.
Well, I would suggest you keep your house and buy the farm. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, there being, let's see here, that is all we have on unscheduled public comments. So thank you both for your concern for this town. We're now Roman numeral nine, agenda items, Imagination Library. And before this report is given, I will say I am so grateful for this. Laura?
So I've put together a packet for you guys to see. I spoke about the Imagination Library. It's been a couple of years now. I was at the podium doing it. And basically what this does, it's through the Dolly Parton Foundation, and they will mail a book to every child from birth to age five, completely free. It's monthly. It has nothing to do with anyone's income, so everyone, no questions asked, can sign up from birth to age five. The part of the town will be basically that we fund this project. We also had to find what's called a local champion, which is, they have to hold a 501(c)(3). And I've put in the packet, the responsibilities of the local champion. Basically, they're going to publicize, register. We will fund it. They pick up any unreturned, any returned books from the library and they're able to keep, donate, sell, whatever, so it works for them. So I found our local champion, which would be the Public Library, the Library Foundation. I spoke with Erica Galloway there, who's over Tazewell County Public Libraries. They are very excited to partner with us and would like to see it roll out to, to all of the county. But for right now, all we need to worry about is Richlands. I've also included the cost of this for you guys. They told me that usually in year one, you know, you're lucky to hit about 20% participation. People are learning about it. And by year five, you're going to really gear out and even out to how you're going to be. So at 100% participation, which she said is pretty well unheard of anywhere, but just for cost's sake, let's say we had 100% participation in Richlands, our yearly cost would be $4,610. I firmly believe the town can afford that, but I have even today, I've had businesses and individuals who have contacted me and said that they would be happy to donate toward this. I also was made aware of a law from one of my Sorensen friends that's also included in the packet, that the state of Virginia will actually pay 50% of our cost until January 1 of 2029. So let's say we come out of the gate at 100% participation, our cost is less than $2,500 a year. So I'm going to ask tonight that we approve participation in the Imagination Library and that we ask Mr. Thomas to contact Erica. I've got all of her contact information. The library is going to approve this at their meeting this month. But they, just for purposes for the Imagination Library, they need an MOU between us and them, basically saying that, that we will ensure funding for them. So I am going to make the motion that we approve the Imagination Library and have Mr. Thomas contact Erica Galloway for the MOU, and I will be happy to answer any questions that I can.
The motion is made by Laura and seconded by Rick to move forward with the Imagination Library. Is, are there any questions on this motion? Or about the Imagination Library?
I just want to say thank you, Laura, for continuing to pursue this. I know you've been working on this for several years and it's a fabulous thing. Reading to your child for five minutes a day is, it impacts their graduation rates and all of these things, and it begins to start them on a better path. I read both of my children every night. When they were little, we read so many books, and it's just a, it's a powerful tool, especially when we live in a world of electronics and people, people need to slow down and take time to read. And I think it's a great thing. Just thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
I'll echo that. Laura had talked to me about it, and I told her I'm always in favor of things that promote education and culture in our community, and this is one of those things. Thank you.
Laura, I've got a question. How do they receive this again?
They'll sign up. They can sign up online. And what the, the local champion will do, they'll partner a lot of times with the schools to let the schools know. They'll partner with the hospitals, so when new babies are born, because you have to be a Town of Richlands resident. Hopefully, ideally, the county will pick this up in other towns. I know Tazewell's looking at us of how we're doing it to move forward. So they'll sign up online, or if they sign up on paper, our local champion will take the paper and put it into the computer, and then that's, that's it. They're mailed to the, the home address every month.
I've got a question. Okay, so how do they choose the books? Just it's a random book?
Yeah, each, each person is getting the same book. Like, you can go on the website and you can see what books they've got, and they might change their books up every couple of years.
So they can actually order the books?
No, they'll send it. They pick it, but they do it based on the age level. So as the, the child, you have to put in the kid's birthday, so as the kid gets older, they'll put it as the appropriate reading level.
Any other questions regarding the Imagination Library or the motion? To my left, to my right, hearing no further questions, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We can move forward with another positive thing for Richlands. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Thomas, I'll get you. Ms. Galloway, I don't know if you have it, but I'll make sure you've got her cell phone number and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Roman numeral nine B, the second reading of the Annex Capital Ordinance. And we have here a staff recommendation. And this is for ordinance O, for ordinance 2024-0901. I think we had a first reading. Is that correct, Mike? Okay. Is there a motion to dispense with a second reading? Rick makes the motion to dispense with the second reading, and Seth makes the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Now, is there a motion to adopt ordinance? Get the exact number, please, for the record. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance 2024-0901, which is Administration Chapter 36 Capital Improvement Accounts? Jan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being?
Oh, can I just say something real quick?
Sure.
I was looking for Morgan in here, but this basically answers the question that was presented during the public hearing, the capital project ordinance. The, it basically puts it in an account that says, we're not going to get this loan and use it for anything other than what's in here. Like, we're not going to get that loan and then stick it in our pockets or even pay for the Imagination Library or anything like that.
It's very specific.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Laura. Any other discussion on this motion before we take a vote? To my left, to my right, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. It is unanimous. Next, Roman numeral nine C, Fire Grants and Fundraising. This is a summary. The recommendation here is informational agenda. New action is required. Has everyone read this? I think it'd be nice if we have it read. Jason, would you read this, please? Summary?
The Richlands Fire Department recently launched a commendable admission to enhance its emergency response capabilities. In collaborative effort with the local rescue squad, the fire department embarked upon a fundraising campaign aimed at acquiring crucial safety equipment. They aim to purchase four self-containing breathing apparatus, SCBA or SCABA units, vital gear that allows firefighters to operate safely in hazardous conditions. Through their diligent efforts and generous support of the community, the fire department has successfully raised $4,500. I believe it's a little bit over that. This amount represents half of the total cost for the SCABA units, which are priced at about $9,000 for this set of four. The fundraising achievement not only demonstrates the department's proactive approach for improving their resources, but also highlights the strong community bonds and support our local fire first responders have. While the fundraising efforts have been impressive, there remains a balance of $4,500 to, to fund the purchase of these critical pieces of equipment fully. This funding needs to be covered by budgeted funds, but additional funding may be needed at the end of the year. The fire department utilized budgeted funds for the remaining funding needs. However, if additional funds are needed at the end of the year, the department may need additional funding. Basically, that's a nice way of saying that we have this budgeted, but the Murphy's Law would tell me as soon as I say that we've got this covered, something or other will happen. At this point in time, we don't seek any additional funding. This should be covered by our budgeted amount. But I do want to make counsel aware, we are spending $4,500 on this. That is cut in half by the. half by the diligent efforts of Chief Keith and Mr. Whitehead and the, the first responders in general. So I wanted to applaud them on this. And I believe that Chief Keith is with us.
Both of them are here.
Both of them are with us this evening. If you have any additional questions.
First, thank you, gentlemen, for your diligence and your dedication. Any questions regarding this procedure?
I just wanted to say thank you. And, you know, one of, one of the things that I always told fire departments when we were in the county, and these guys know that, is that if you come asking for a project and you've already raised half the money, it's real hard to say no, you know, that. So I appreciate them doing that. Not that we would have said no to something that they needed anyway. But it's, it's a great effort for them to do that. And we appreciate it. And every dollar that they can save, it, it helps us out in other things that we need to do for the town. So thank you, guys. And no problems approving this. I'll, we have a motion on the floor?
It doesn't require?
It doesn't want. All right.
Sounds good. Thank you, Seth. Anybody else want to comment?
Who won the raffle?
You and Smith.
Oh, so experiment. Okay, cool.
Thank you guys. What you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do appreciate you. Long time service. Okay, next, we have under staff summary, the Greenway Stage Rental. So again, I will defer to Jason for this, please. Summary?
Thank you, Mayor. So the Greenway Stage Project is approaching its final stage of completion. We're, we're at a place where the front section of the stage, the under part, we are going to do some plantings probably later this spring. We just haven't gotten to it before. We're too close to the freeze mark at this point in time to do much planting. The concrete's been poured, all of the lighting, everything else. The love sign's been put up. We're, we're at that place where this is pretty much a done deal. A few little loose strings to tie up. One of the questions that we have gotten from several different community groups is whether this will be available for rental by community groups. This is a question that I wanted to bring to council. The staff is recommending to allow this. We have a very good downtown group between Ms. Keisha Cole and Deidre Harris are really spearheading a lot of the, the events that we're doing downtown. They would be responsible for helping to be able to schedule this. This would not interfere with any of the town's events. But in the, the, those weekends and those weeknights, when the town doesn't have events, especially in spring and in fall, there has been a request from a couple of different community groups to be able to rent the stage and be able to utilize it for gospel evening. It was one of the things that we had, had a request around. And we've had a couple of churches that have reached out in interest of this. We would benchmark this against other area rental spaces to be able to allow that. And we would also incorporate any of those costs for staff to be able to run either sound or, or the lighting, or to be able to do both setup and close down would be included in that. We wanted to be able to see council's approach to this. What I will do is if you're in favor of this, we'll go back, benchmark that and bring back rates to you probably in the October, if not the November meeting, to be able to talk about what that rental rate would be if council's in favor of doing that. More than happy to answer any other questions.
Jason, would you like a motion or consensus?
A motion would probably be preferred at this point.
Is there a motion to move forward with, rates will have to be established in policies?
Yes, sir.
Allowing the community the option of renting the area and stage as this will generate revenue and increase utilization of the space. Jason, or Jordan makes the motion. Rick makes the second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just have one question. Will it be consistent with the groups who are asking to rent? Because I, specifically, we had, someone had asked last year, and it was like a religious type group. And then the conversation was brought up by, I don't remember if it was here or however it came up of, you know, if you let one group, we need to make sure that we're letting all groups, like not picking and choosing. And that's my, I don't want to see us pick and choose. Like if we let one, we'll let all.
No, ma'am. We, we don't plan on having any policies to be able to discriminate. We don't discriminate any of the other rentals for Critterville or the Rec Park or any of the other spaces. The only thing I would add is that we would want to make sure that we follow our public noise ordinance. And so that would be, any of those would be ended by 10 o'clock if there was amplified music or to be able to do that. But no, ma'am, we would not discriminate in any way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Jason. Any other questions? Hearing no more, no further comment. We have a motion, a second on the floor. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion is unanimous. So staff can proceed with the establishment of policies,
procedures, and fees. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Roman numeral nine E, the Amler Grant. All right, we have here a staff summary before us. Jason?
So just summarize the, the staff summary, because sometimes I can be a little long-winded when I put this on together. We applied to the Amler program back in the fall. This has been a long-term project. We've met with the Amler folks on several different occasions to discuss our five-megawatt generator project in advance of the actual application. We followed up with a couple of Q and As with them. They met last month and we were awarded $2 million. $200,000 of that will cover any environmental, any environmental studies that we have to complete. But the large majority of this grant will go towards the actual purchase of the generator. The purchase price is a little over $8 million. This would cover a quarter of that. And so this is a very good grant for the town. We already, the council and staff are working now to be able to set together the financing package for this. We have our matches included in this, so $2 million from them. We do have a grant application in with the Tobacco Regional, Regional Revitalization Committee. Believe that they are meeting later this month to be able to do that. So we're hopeful to be able to get additional funding for this. This would be, you know, cover a quarter of the actual purchase price and be able to, to be able to decline the actual full amount that the town would have to go to bond for it. So every bit that we have to be able, in grants, to be able to cut down the cost means it's less debt service for us to have to take out to be able to make this project a provision. More than happy to answer any additional questions.
Jason, thank you. I would assume, and I would think we would want a motion to accept graciously this grant management process. So.
So move.
Seth makes the motion. And there is a second by Jordan. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just wanted to say thank you to Jason. We started working with Amler before Jason came on board. And I think the first meeting that Jason and I had, we had a discussion about this grant. So he did a fabulous job picking up and taking off with that. And I want to thank him and his staff for doing that. And the Amler people have been fabulous. They wanted, you know, they, they want great projects. And this, they believe, is a great project. So it was a, you know, this was a pretty, pretty good one. And, and our timelines ended up working out. We were a little bit nervous about that. But they've changed some of their, some of the way that they administer the money, which helps also. We were a little bit nervous about that in the beginning, but all that kind of worked out as well. But anyway, thank you, Jason. Thank you for the hard work on this.
Thank you, Seth. Any other comments before we have a vote?
I agree. Thank you to Jason. Also, thank you to Seth for bringing the project and the grant. This is huge for Richlands. And if you watch the news all over the Commonwealth, you guys were both named in multiple news articles about, even from comments from the governor about what a great project this is and everything. So I know it's been a long time coming, but Seth, you've been instrumental in it. Jordan was on the electrical, the committee there. And, you know, everybody's just really pulled their heads together and worked as a team to get this done. And I know Gary's, Gary's contributed to that. And it's just been a great project. So to be able to pull $2 million into it, every dollar that we save is more savings we can pass on. And, and you guys have been great with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments? Hearing no further comments. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, council. It is unanimous. We graciously accept. I can't imagine turning down $2 million. Okay, next, we have Roman numeral nine F, Engineering Services, RFP and WTP Engineering Project. So we have a summary, a background. Jason, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we, I believe at the June meeting, had a conversation around our water project. We had gone to bid for that project and the bids had come in and very, very over what the, the budgeted amount was. At that point in time, I asked council for the ability to go to an RFP to be able to, to be able to phase this project, to be able to bring a new engineering team on, to be able to look at the construction documents, the bid documents we have, and to be able to work in conjunction with my staff to be able to look at a phased approach for both the water and the wastewater projects. This was an RFP that was placed on the Electric VA. So it was put on the EVA website. We in totality received three bids, but two of those were received after the bid date. So they had to be excluded from this. What staff has done is reviewed the, the bid from McGill. We feel like they are a regional, a regional engineering firm that has a lot of experience in both water and wastewater projects. And what we're asking council is to be able to award the contract. We will be able to move into contract negotiations or award the bid to McGill. We'll begin contract negotiations with them, looking to be able to set up and not to exceed contract with them, to be able to do both the phasing and to assist with the project management of the water and the wastewater fund. Just for additional information, we've reached out to DEQ for our wastewater funding. We still have that in place. It's a little over $10 million in a very low interest loan. I think it's 0.5% with about $2.1 million in principal forgiveness. That will be the project we will start with first. If we, if you provide approval for this bid this evening, we will begin contract negotiations, bring back a contract in the October meeting. And in the interim, my team will start to meet with McGill to be able to start looking at the phased approach. We'll start providing some of the documents that we have so that they can get, hit the ground running as quick as we possibly can. My team has been working over the past month to begin to look at how we prioritize these, the phased approach towards the, both the water and the wastewater. We're starting to value engineer some of the, some of the pieces of that project out that may not be necessary at this point in time. So we've, what we're asking for this evening is for us, for you to award the bid to McGill and to allow myself and my staff to begin to work through contract negotiations with them.
Thank you, Jason. This is very important, as all of the projects we're working on. We're going to, it's critical, in the first sentence, we're in the midst of critical upgrades to our water and wastewater infrastructure. So is there a motion to accept the bid from McGill Associates for Phase Engineering and Project Management?
So move.
Rick makes the motion. Laura makes a second?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Are there any, is there any discussion on this motion? I only have one question. Where are, where are McGill, where are they located? Jason stepped out. Do you know where they're located?
I don't know them.
I mean, they were the only ones who submitted a bid in a timely manner. I just was curious.
Said regional.
It didn't say regional.
A regional expertise, local experience. I just curious.
Let me Google it for you, Ron.
Okay, thanks, Seth. Well, that was my only question. It's just a matter of curiosity and nothing more. I'll wait till you find out and we can take a vote. Any other questions regarding this motion?
Do we know like a timeline?
He's back. We can ask.
He said October, he would bring us something back.
Jason?
The thing they're doing is we're accepting the bid so he can send them stuff and they start working.
On the contract?
And we want to have a not exceed amount on the contract.
Jason, I just asked where they were located. Seth's trying to Google it and find out.
I apologize. I have the bid packets in the, in my office. I can grab that. But they're, they're in the, the western part of the state, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, that's fine. Just a matter of curiosity, not anything but that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
Roanoke.
Did you find it?
Yeah, Roanoke.
Roanoke. Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept this bid from McGill. And to clarify, you're going to work on the contract and bring it back to us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So any further questions on this motion, council? Fear being no further questions, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, council. Next, we are on Roman numeral nine, Engineering Services for, pardon me, we're on G, Detour Resolution, R 2024-0901. Okay, so we have a resolution before us. And Mike, I do need some support here. I have this resolution. Okay, we're good. We're good. So we have a resolution. Would council like me to read this, please, as is appropriate? Thank you. Resolution R 0901 2024. Whereas, the Commonwealth Transportation Board has allocated funding through the Smart Scale Program for a project in the town of Richlands to realign the intersection of Second Street and Front Street to improve operations and safety at the intersection. And whereas, construction of the intersection improvements can be accomplished more quickly and safely with the temporary road closure of Front Street between Kent Ridge Road and Rockbridge Avenue. And whereas, in accordance with the Virginia Department of Transportation Construction Administration Procedures, it is necessary that a request by resolution be received from the local government in order that the Virginia Department of Transportation establish a safe and efficient detour of traffic around the affected portion of Front Street. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia, request the Virginia Department of Transportation plan for the, plan for and establish a detour to be put in place as required during the reconstruction and realignment of Front Street near its intersection at Second Street. May I request that be corrected? If we have a second avenue, this is Second Street. Thank you. See it?
Yes, sir. We'll make that adjustment.
So when I sign it, it'll be corrected. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, assuming we propose, this means so, which I think it will. Be it further resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Richlands, Virginia hereby authorizes the detour to be in place for the duration of the construction of the raised median barrier, which is estimated to take approximately one month. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Gabe makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have three seconds. Who wants to flip coin?
Rick can do it. Oh, it doesn't matter.
Rock, paper, scissors. Who's got it?
Laura's got it.
Laura has it?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on adopting this resolution?
Question.
Yes.
What's the beginning date of the construction?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I apologize. I, I believe this does not start until 20, until late 2025, early 2026. I will get that information and bring that back at the next meeting. It's not pressing at this moment, but I'll make sure I get that information for you at next meeting.
I was just wondering how that coincides with the other bridge.
That, that's one of the things that we've had discussions with VDOT. That was part of the reason why we've asked council to be able to do a full closure for Front Street, for the Front Street Bridge. That allows both of these projects. That project will begin in November and has a year long. That's why I believe that this project starts in late 2025, because it, they're going to be bang, 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 right behind each other. So this, I believe, starts in late 2025 or early 2026. But there, there should not be an overlap. We're working very hard to make sure that that does not happen.
Thank you, Jan. Any other questions?
Those guys that was here at that last meeting, they said would probably be late '25.
That's right. Okay. Any other questions regarding this resolution? To my left, to my right. There being no further questions, roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, council. It is unanimous. Next, we have Roman numeral nine H, Virginia 250 Resolution, which is before you. It is Resolution 2024-0902. And if you don't mind, I will read it. Okay, there we go. A resolution of the Town of Richlands relating to the support of the Virginia America 250 Commission. Whereas, the Town Council of Richlands, Virginia is dedicated to the furtherance of economic development and tourism of Richlands, And, whereas, the Virginia America 250 Commission, VA 250, was created in 2020 by the General Assembly for the purpose of preparing for and commemorating the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in American independence. And, whereas, Virginia 250, VA 250, has requested that each locality form a committee to aid in planning for the commemoration period. And, whereas, the Town of Richlands Town Council will form a local VA 250 Committee. And, whereas, the Committee will plan and coordinate programs occurring within the locality and communicate regularly with VA 250. And, whereas, the Town Council of Richlands, Virginia wishes to undertake this endeavor with VA 250 to promote and commemorate this important historic milestone. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Richlands, Virginia Town Council hereby will form a Committee to Aid in the Planning for the Commemoration Period and hereby desires to support the Virginia America 250 Commission and their efforts to commemorate the 250th anniversary of Virginia's participation in American independence. I would defer to Jason to explain this and the role our town has in it. It's actually very specific, and to be clear, this is to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence.
So one of the things the town is, staff is working on right now is that the Virginia Tourism Corporation is providing a grant called the VA 250, VTC 250. This is a $10,000 grant with a $10,000 match. We're working with our partners at the Section House, with a CART, with the County Tourism, and with our VTC DMO, our Division of Marketing Organization. What we're looking to do is to be able to do marketing materials and to be able to plan some events around the 250th anniversary of the United States. We're looking to be able to build upon this. We're, we're looking to be able to update our website, be able to have brochures and marketing materials, both for the town and for our partners in this process. And the first, one of the larger steps that we need is to be able to have a resolution from counsel stating that you're in support of this. Again, this would be a benefit to both the Section House and to the town, to be able to have a couple of different events. We are still working through those events right now to be able to talk through what, what those events will be, but in order to be able to get the ball rolling, we need to have a resolution from you this evening. I'm more than happy to answer any additional questions.
Is there a motion to accept this resolution? Jordan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Laura makes her second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Is it a big lift, Jason, or is it?
No, this is one where we're going to be working with our community partners around this. It's mutually beneficial, because we can both build a, a new website, hopefully, with this. But, but we've got some really good, I don't want to get too terribly far into the events, but there's several that are really, I, I think if we're able to put this together, will, will really mark Richlands on the map with regards to the 250th anniversary. We'll have more additional information in the, the near future, but I just finished up the, most of the narrative for this grant. I've got my team butchering it, because I'm long-winded on these grants, and this is a smaller grant. So we're, we should be on, on point to be able to get this grant application turned in. And it's $10,000 that will go towards some of the work that we had already planned, and this allows us to be able to double up some of the money that we're looking at.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think this is great. I just wanted to say, I, I, you know, I think that this nation owes a debt to the frontiersmen who lived here, Tazle County, Russell County, Washington County. They were the over-mountain men who turned the tide of the Revolutionary War. And so I think this is fantastic, and we definitely.
Seth, it really isn't, obviously, I like it. So I will add one little thing. We're going to be celebrating all over the Commonwealth the Declaration of Independence. And to that end, he's not the main character. He'd definitely be playing. Lafayette had a visit that lasted two years in America, and he ventured as far as Abingdon and has been very close to us, as a matter of reference. Interesting things. We really are tied much more closely sometimes than we think. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will we have to form another committee, or will this work under the Events Committee?
I think it sounds more like Section House. I might be wrong, but.
I, I would defer to Jason.
There'll be members of my staff working with members of the Section House Committee and a couple of other different community partners to be able to do this. This gets us to be able to allow to form that committee. We'll come back at a later date with who will be serving on that committee, but there'll be a small steering committee to be able to assist this.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Gary, since Ms. Cole has been here, she's been instrumental in taking, alleviating the, the weight off the shoulders of the Events Committee, which is basically Jan.
So I'm not voting out here, Jay.
And I don't, I don't want to take credit, like, Jan has been instrumental in that, but Ms. Cole really has picked up a lot of that and is doing a great job doing it. She came to Jan and I and asked, you know, do you guys want to be involved? And we said, please have at it. But we will, I'm, I don't want to speak for Jan, but I'm sure we will always help in any way that we, we can, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, here, no further discussion. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura.
It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next, turn.
Mayor Curry, may we have a break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ten-minute recess.
This meeting of the Richlands Town Council is now back in order. We are now on Roman numeral nine and we're on I, resolution authorizing note financing. Right here. Right here, up here. Okay, so I conferred with Mike about reading this resolution and his suggestion was a round robin because it's a little bit long. Yeah, it's a requirement.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we waive the reading of this resolution.
Okay, I want to let him have a second. I defer what were you saying before?
I was just saying that the ordinance, under the charter, the ordinance has to be read twice, unless dispensed with. So in that same section, it just talks about the passing of resolutions. It does not actually talk to the, the reading of the resolution.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion then. We just don't do it. Okay?
Here, here.
So we have a resolution before us. I'll simply read the title and I did check Seth. We're going to have to read this book. All we read is the first five pages. Okay, so here we go. Resolution only the title authorizing a not to exceed $6 million Town of Richlands, Virginia, general obligation note, series 2024, bank qualified, and providing the form and details thereof. So I do think it's appropriate to read the first little part, the whereas. Seth, would you read those?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Whereas pursuant to the Public Finance Act, Chapter 26, Title 15.2, the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, the Public Finance Act. The Town of Richlands, Virginia, the town, desires to issue its not to exceed $6 million Town of Richlands, Virginia, general obligation note, series 2024, the note, to First Bank and Trust Company, the lender. Whereas the town will use the proceeds of this note, together with other funds lawfully available to the town, to acquire, construct, rehabilitate, and equip various capital improvements in the town, included but not limited to a natural gas generator, town swimming pool, fire station, rescue squad building, and trash truck, and pay costs in connection with issuing the note, the project. And whereas the Town Council of the Town, the Town Council, held a duly notice public hearing on September the 10th, 2024, in connection with the issuance sale and award of the note in accordance with requirements of Public Finance Act. And whereas the town may issue such indebtedness at the election of the Town Council under the provision of Section 15.2-2601 of the Public Finance Act of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, the Virginia Code. Without regard to the requirements, restrictions, or other provisions contained in any charter or local or special act applicable to the town, and further under the provision of Section 15.2-2607 of the Virginia Code, the Town Council may adopt this resolution authorizing the issuance of indebtedness at the meeting at which it is introduced upon a majority vote of the members of the Town Council.
Seth, thank you. And the reason I asked that that particular part we read, that addresses questions that we're asking at a public hearing. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest that if anyone would like a copy of this and you don't have one, we, we will make those available. You know, anytime, and I think if we can ever move to get our charter changed, we don't have to read ordinances. What we do is we provide a stack of those to anyone who wants them and that way we make sure. So the same thing tonight, if you didn't get a copy of this and you want one, here's my copy and we'll make copies available to you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a resolution on the floor. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Rick makes the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Gary seconds the motion to adopt the resolution and I don't see a resolution number, but anyway, it's authorizing a not to exceed $6 million Town of Richlands, Virginia, general obligation note, series 2024, bank qualified, providing the form and details thereof. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jason, I've gotten a ton of questions about this. Could you just give like a brief overview of how, how this is a financial tool and how you plan to use it? There's a lot of confusion out there. I didn't want to speak on behalf. Just please give a brief, dumb it down as much, so like I'm five.
Basically what we're doing is we are utilizing short-term financing to be able to get from where we are today to where we will go to bond proceeds. So the bond is basically you're, you're using short-term financing to be able to get, you have a, when you approve the, moving forward with the generator, there were two payments that were immediately, one was within 45 days, the other is in November. It's going to take us time. When you go to bond, it's a very long process, not that this is short, but, but it's even longer because we have to go through bond counsel. We have to be able to show that we are able to be able to pay for the debt service long term and then we have to actually sell a bond. We will go and, and sell a bond that'll be on the open market. Anybody can be able to purchase this. It can be purchased from a number of different folks. That takes time to be able to do it. The other piece is that we knew we were going to be applying for the AMLR grant. We knew we were applying for funding with the Tobacco Regional Revitalization Commission. We're also in talks with VACIDA to be able to see about additional funding from them. We don't want to go to bond until we have a, a very good understanding of what that final amount will be. So this gives us the ability, it's a short-term note, to be able to bridge the gap between when you originally approved this project to where we go to bond. During that time period, you're going to spend about 5.2 million of the total project cost. This allows you to cover that cost. In addition to that, there are a couple of smaller projects, garbage truck, swimming pool, and the fire station rescue squad building that may have some, a, a, a cost in the near term, especially the trash truck. What you want to do is you want to go to bond the fewest number of times that you can because when you go to bond, you have to pay bond counsel, you have to pay financial advisors. There's a, there's some initial costs. It's no different than when you go to be able to take a loan. You have title that you have to go through. You have a number of different checks that you have to be able to provide as part of that mortgage that you're taking. In, in essence, what the town is doing is it's taking out a long-term finance or is similar to a mortgage to be able to pay for the generator project. You, it takes time to be able to get all of that done. This allows you to continue to move forward with, with the project while going to, to be able to prepare to go to bond. What we are looking at right now, we're working with our financial advisors to be able to get an understanding. If everything goes perfectly and we only have to go to bond for seven or eight million dollars of this project, then that, we want to make sure that we go do that. The other thing is, is that anybody that's been following the, the news around the financial world over the past couple of months is that it looks like the feds are going to drop the rates hopefully by about 50 basis points or a half a percent, hopefully later this month, with additional drops in November and December. And so we may very well get a much better interest rate on this project when we go to bond in late winter, early spring to be able to do this. This allows us to be able to use a short-term financial tool to be able to bridge that gap, pay interest because it will be an interest charge to this. But looking at this, this project in totality over probably a 10 to 20-year time span, the, the interest rate on the bond is much more important than the interest rate on the short-term note because we're just paying a short-term amount of interest to be able to get through this. What it also does is it starts to set us up to have investment strategies and, and financial tools that can be later used to be able to do this. If council chooses to move forward with the Public Works Fire Station Rescue Squad project, you have debt service money in the budget right now for the fire, for the garbage truck and for the swimming pool. If all of that goes to, to forward, what we're working with the financing advisors right now is to be able to gain an understanding of how, what is the best way of being able to finance this? How much should we use of fund balance? How much should we finance? How long should we finance that for? And we want to do that one time. So that's why we're using this to be able to bridge that gap. It allows us to be able to continue to move forward with the projects, be able to fund those now, but not go to full debt because we don't want to go and, and sell a bond for 10 million, only need seven. And now we have $3 million that we either may have to pay an early payoff on or that we have to be able to worry about arbitrage, which is where we collect more interest than what we're paying and that puts us in, in hot water with the IRS. I know that's a little wonky, but what this does is it provides a short-term financing to be able to get from where you authorized the project back in June, to be able to where you're going to go to bond in January to be able to fully finance this, allows us to be able to go through some of the grant projects, be able to gain an understanding of what we're going to be able to get from grants, what we'll be able to get in other, other loan products, either from VRA or from other folks that we're working with. It allows us to be able to bridge that gap and then have a, a good understanding of what the town's final responsibility will be for this project so that you're not going borrowing more money than what you need. Not trying to be wonky.
No, no, that's perfect. That is perfect. I just wanted to make sure. I've got tons of questions and I, you hit the nail on the head. Would you be okay with saying it leaves or it gives us more options? Okay, I like that answer.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Jason.
And we used to have a line of credit. And when we done the, when we paid it off, when Thompson and Litten, we done the plans, we just accidentally canceled that or something that we should have never done, but we did.
This, this, this note is for 24 months, so this gives us a line of credit for a full two-year period before we would have to go to a long-term solution. So if we move forward with this, we put the 2.1 that we've already paid towards the generator, the 3.1 that is due in the end of November, that puts us at 5.2. If I go to bond and be able to pay that off in, in January or February, then I still have funding to be able to come back and talk to you, or I still have capacity to then be able to talk about how do we fund the swimming pool project, the garbage project, and the fire station project? Get those moving in the right direction, get an understanding of what that full cost is, then go to bond on those as well. Again, at each point in this process, it'll be brought back to council to be able to understand what the long-term debt service will be and make sure that we have that in our hand before we go to budget discussions later in the spring. That way, anything that we are borrowing money, we have the debt service budgeted for that so that we can be able to take care of that long-term. And that's why we're working with the financial advisors now to gain an understanding. If we're at 8 million, what our debt service will be. If we're at 6 million, what our debt service will be. If we're 10 million, what our debt service will be so that we can be able to bring that information back to council so that you can understand what it is that you're borrowing and what the long-term implications from a financing point of view will be, both on the generator project and on any other general fund projects. Again, it's not limited to these, but what you're allowing us to do is to be able to go and move forward with these projects. Anytime we do this, we have to bring this back to council. We want to make sure that we're as transparent as we possibly can be about what the town is taking on as far as debt and what the long-term financing implications of that will be.
And Jordan, it also, it, it also helps us to not have to just pull all of our reserve funds. And, you know, that's, that's the critical part of this. And had we had the other line of credit, you know, that got paid off, but it really wasn't set up properly to begin with.
Are you talking about the line?
We had a line of credit that we used, or that we didn't, I'm sorry, that the former council used to purchase the engineering for the wastewater treatment plant. And it was over a million dollars, but we used ARPA funds to pay that off.
Seth, was that a line of credit with?
National Bank.
Okay, I, I was misunderstanding. I thought we were talking about a general obligation bond.
No, it was never set up like this. This is the proper, what Jason is, and, and Ronnie, your engineering here is the proper way to do this. And this would be some, yeah, that we can utilize going forward. And, but anyway, it's well worth it because it, it makes us able to move quicker and to do things. And we also, we anticipate millions more in grant money to come.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Seth. And I would like to request something. Do we have a motion? I don't think, did we have a motion at this time? On this?
I think we did. Gary made, sorry, Rick made the motion and Gary said.
Okay, that's, thank you. I would request, I said something, that there's not a number on the resolution and thank you, Rick, for pointing out to me that on the agenda, there is the number, but it's not printed on the resolution. May I ask that before I sign it, this is reprinted with this number because numbers really help you quickly find these.
Yes, sir. And we will do that going forward.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Thank you, council. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, they're being there for the discussion. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council. It is unanimous. Okay, we're moving right along. We're on J, loader contract from August 13th to 2024 meeting. Jason?
So when we came together in August, we discussed a proposal to be able to move forward with the loader. To the best of my understanding, at this point in time, this would be one of the last large pieces of machinery that we need to purchase to be able to replace some of the current machinery that we had. There was some discussion as to the current state of the, of the current loader and I own some responsibility in that. I, sometimes I, I'm the, the translator of information from public works officials to council and I didn't do a very good job of conveying what the, the state of the current loader was. I think there was some miscommunication that there was only issues with the brakes. It's much more drastic than that is at this moment in time. Really, at this point in time, the, the current loader is, the, the bucket's about rusted out. There's a number of other things that are, that are very detrimental to the operator of, of this machine and, and really at this point in time, we've parked this at this point in time. And one of the, the bills you will see, we rented a loader to be able to get through a couple of different projects because our current loader that we have isn't functional at this point in time. So what we wanted to do is to bring this back for additional discussions and be able to see if there were any other questions around the loader.
I went and looked at the loader. The loader's in really pitiful shape. It's a lot worse than it was described here. I mean, the main seals were leaking, all the hydraulic cylinders were leaking, the floorboards rusted out. I mean, we didn't get all them details. At that, that being said, I'll make the motion for the loader.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to accept the lease and budgeting. So for this loader, is there a second?
I'll say.
And the second is made by Jordan. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I have one, one thing I just noticed on here. On the Caterpillar Financial Services sheet, this payment that they've given us with the amortization schedule includes insurance through the Caterpillar Insurance Company. I don't necessarily think we need that.
No, sir, and that'll be adjusted when we get.
Okay, so that means our payment will be another, you know, $200 less than, than this. Okay.
But Seth, I think on equipment, when you do the way we're doing this, you have to carry that insurance.
It says that this is, this is just an estimate. We don't have to because we should, as a municipality, we, we had the best, some of the best, cheapest insurance in, in the world. That's why I'm asking that question because all of our stuff is covered under a blanket policy and it's, it's very cheap. That's why we, you know, we insure lots of buildings and everything else.
I'll double check both of those and I'll have the updated information for you at the October meeting just to be able to clarify that information.
I just don't want to send it in. There's no need to be double insured.
No, no.
To be clear, when council votes, they're voting on the lease, but not including the insurance. Is that what you're saying?
Unless it's necessary, unless it's required.
Unless it's required. Possible.
We are covered with VERSA under the blanket policy.
Okay, I just want to make sure what council's voting on because I follow what you're saying and you're saying.
It'll actually be cheaper.
When I follow, but I want to make sure we're voting clearly. We know what we're voting on.
Yes, sir. What you're voting, sorry, what you're voting on is to be able to move forward with the Caterpillar contract. We will work out the details of that contract as we work through with Caterpillar. I will bring back updated information at the October meeting to let you know if we're able to cover this under our VERSA policy or whether we have to take an additional because it is a capital lease.
So council, what we're voting on, there's a motion and a second, I think. We're voting on the authorizing the manager to proceed with the contract.
Yes.
Okay, making sure about that because I wasn't sure either. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is this a new loader?
Yes, sir, brand new.
I know we discussed it with a few others. Did you ask about?
The buying that used one that we rented?
We, we did look at that. We can, we can have that conversation, but at the, this point in time, one of the staff's recommendations is to be able to look at doing this as a new. One of the reasons you look at getting new is just because of the warranty. You usually get about three to five years' worth of warranty depending on how many hours of operation you're doing. Sometimes that warranty is not as, as put in place when you're purchasing used, especially if you're close to that, that break even of the, the warranty on that. That's why it's recommended to be able to go with new.
What is required to keep the warranty up? Is it like Caterpillar has to, oh, I guess.
Is it required that Caterpillar has to do all the maintenance?
No, sir. No, sir. That, that, it just has to, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a warranty that covers most of that repair. We'll do the normal maintenance on this, but if anything was to break, if we have a, a main seal or some of the things that we currently have, Caterpillar will send their technician, fix it, and we don't have to pay anything.
Okay.
That's why you see a lot of the, the used Caterpillars that you'll see out there are right at that five-year mark or I think it's 25,000 hours. Rick may be able to speak more coherently to that, but that's the reason that you see an awful lot of those at that timeframe is because they've gotten past the warranty. And if anything breaks, now you're the one that's responsible for it during that warranty time period. Caterpillar sends somebody as their dom and they take care of it.
The warranty is, standard warranty is 12 months unlimited hours. Then it's got an extended warranty on it, 60 months, 3,000 hours. It's a governmental thing that they, yes.
Thank you, Rick, for your contribution. Okay, any further questions? Comments? They're he, hearing no more. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Nora? Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, council. Okay, now we have an add-on, which would be K, for the Quantum Power Contract. Jason?
I'm going to defer to Mike on this.
I sent this to you all a couple of weeks ago for you all to review. Did not receive any questions or concerns, so we feel like it would be something that council wants to move forward, would need to adopt this to allow Jason to sign.
Okay, is, first, is there a motion to accept the contract?
Some of it. Mr. Mayor?
Seth makes the motion. And is there a second?
I'll say.
All right, Rick makes a second. Now, is there any discussion on this contract?
Has there been a lot of updates since you sent it out or anything we need to like?
No, there's not been any updates. There was that numbering issue, which I'm sure will be taken care of.
Mike, thank you for sending that in advance. I always appreciate those types of things, especially things I have to decide on like that because I read it and I couldn't say anything that I have concerns about and I'm sure we all did. It means a lot to the council. Thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor regarding acceptance of this contract with Quantum Power. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mike, was there anything in here that you saw? I mean, because I, I'm like you, I read it, but this is not my wheelhouse, so I'm relying on everyone who's more knowledgeable than me on this one.
I'm not seeing anything that gives me great concern. You know, obviously as far as limiting any kind of liability, I'm always a little, little concerned with that, but it looks like that it, they're just basically transferring it over to Solar, who's going to be the one that we're going to really deal with in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And it is before us here in printed copy. Thank you. Okay, any further questions, comments, anyone? Hearing no further discussion. I will ask a roll call vote, please. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. We're now on Roman numeral 10. Ronnie, financial report.
All right, so what do you have, Mr. Mayor, Town Council? What you have in front of you is the first month of the new fiscal year. This is July 2024. And I will point out before we go through the detail that, you know, some of the numbers are going to look funny as far as this is only one month and, you know, it's going to take a while before we establish any timing or permanent, permanent trends in the numbers, but I'll walk you through all of that. So with the general fund, it, it's showing a, a net loss of 441,000 for the month of July. The revenues came in lower in all categories. That was 4.6 of budget or 7.5 million. And this was offset by a help of lower expenses, 10.2% or 7.1 million. And just to note, the revenues, that's timing, expenses are timing, capital is timing. Once again, it's just the very first month. There isn't any other year-to-date information to incorporate in this. On the water fund, year-to-date net income variance, we have lower revenues hurt, 7.1% or 1.7 million. This was offset by lower expenses and capital purchases, help of 8.2% or 1.3 million. All the categories there, revenues, expenses, and capital are timing as well. Year-to-date net loss on the sewer of about $11,000. We had lower revenues hurt of 8.4% or 1.7 million, and that was offset by lower expenses, help of 10.6% or 1.4 million. All categories are timing on the sewer fund as well. Water sewer line maintenance, year-to-date net loss, just 10,000 at this point. There was a help from lower expenses of 5.4% or 614,000. And a higher revenues help of 25,000, and that came from a Cumberland Plate to planning for sewer evaluation. That would be a permanent variance because that was a one-time event, and then the expenses would be timing there. On the electric fund, getting a lot of questions on this one, but it'll make sense in just a minute. The year-to-date net loss is a result from lower revenues hurt, 7.7% or 6.7 million. This was offset by lower expenses and capital purchases, net help of 38.3% or 4.5 million. And what you're seeing there, it would have been pretty flat except we had the down payment of the generator. And that's going to be timing as well until we get the line of credit in place. So revenues, expenses, and capital for the electric fund, those are all timing variances. Any questions on the summary review? All right. What follows behind it is the detailed review. If there's any accounts you need additional detail on, or if you would like to meet, to review any of the accounts together, just let me know. Then the third attachment is the reserve analysis. And looking at the balances for the general fund, we had about a $1.3 million decrease from June. The unreserved cash balance is about 2.7 million. And most of this is timing as well just because, you know, we had revenues. Revenues are lower, and, you know, they're being offset by the expenses, and some of the revenues won't come in until a later month. And then on the next page is the water department. We had a $174,000 decrease from June. It's the unreserved balance is at 936,000, and the projected is at 423,000. And that's a 288,000 decrease from June. And just to point out, we are still following the current financial statement policies that have been in effect since October of 19. We are looking at revising those to bring you a proposed draft next month. On the sewer department, we had a $51,000 decrease. It's still running a small negative, but that is definitely slowly starting to dwindle away with the change in rates last year. And overall, we've got a positive 28,000, including both restricted and unrestricted. And then the projected is still running about 900,000 to a million negative, which is 112,000 decrease from June on the sewer fund. And the last fund, the electric fund, we have 651,000 unreserved cash balance. It's a 2.3 decrease from June. Obviously, that's the same situation with the generator down payment. When you look at the projected balance, you've got the generator coming out, but then you've got some helps from the timing of the AMP payments, and that's why it's a little bit less than the 2 million at 1.8 million. And that's the summary of the reserve accounts. I also have the detail behind that. Any questions on the bank balances?
Do the highlighted values need anything?
The highlight values are unreserved. That's what makes up the unreserved balances. Some of you, you might have copies where that ain't come clear. I'll make sure that works out better next time. But the details should tie to their summary reserve schedule. And that's everything I had on the monthly financials. And then I also have some budget amendments to present, which would be the next.
One more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you going to put that RFP out for the savings and all of that? I haven't seen that go out yet. Is it out now?
It's not out yet. We've met this week to be able to talk through the policies. I've got two RFPs out this morning. That's the last one that we're trying to get done. It should be out, if not by the end of this week, the middle of next week.
Got you.
Ronnie, you want to talk about the budget amendments?
Okay.
Now, we have before us on the table here, we have budget amendments. Are these the ones we're using right here?
Yeah, you should have three replacements and two that were already in your packet. And I apologize for the confusion. I was, the very first paragraph had police in them all, and I.
Have what?
Had police department in them all, even though the detail was right.
Chief Holt was just a really big team player.
I'm sure.
I didn't say anything. I thought, well, they'll explain it.
Jordan pointed it out as well, so we fixed it. Okay, so you should have one. It's 93,929 dollars in front of you. That's the first one. This is for two vehicles for the wastewater plant directors. One went for Jimmy, and another one went for, was for Billy. We're proposing to take the retirement of debt, which we're not going to have as much because of some of these projects being pushed back, and use that offset to pay for these vehicles. So if we make this budget amendment, it would be a transfer from retirement of debt to the vehicle capital account, and it would be a wash in total.
Do we need to do motions for each individual one?
I was going to ask, would you like each one? I think probably it's best. Okay, so, good question. So what we're looking at right now is, so they have requested the budget-related appropriations for the general fund wastewater department be amended as set forth below as permitted and authorized by the general statute of Virginia. Is everybody on the right one?
Yes.
Everybody with me? Okay. So is there, we'll go ahead and vote on that, okay, Ronnie? Okay. All right, is there a motion to accept this budget amendment?
So moved.
Laura makes the motion. Second. Dan makes a second. Any discussion on this amendment? There being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Thank you, counsel. That is unanimous. Ronnie, next one?
Okay, thank you. The next one, it should be $8,500. It is a repair and replacement of the AC at the Rec Park Department. And this one, we're proposing to transfer from the unrestricted fund balance, which is what we also call the fund balance allocation, to the capital project for building and improvements. And, yeah, so you're going from like a revenue account to a capital account, but we would be using unrestricted funds for that repair.
Okay, thank you, Ronnie. Is there a motion to accept this budget amendment?
So moved.
Okay, Jordan makes the motion, and Rick makes a second. Acceptable? Okay. Any discussion on this motion, counsel? Hearing no discussion, but we have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. It is unanimous. Let the record reflect. All right, Ronnie?
All right, thank you. The next one should be $35,000. This is for the purchase of a leaf vacuum truck for the Public Works Street Department. And we're proposing to use unrestricted funds for this one as well. And it'd be similar to the last one where we'd have a transfer from a revenue account to a capital account for a total of $35,000.
Is there a motion to approve this budget amendment? Jordan makes the motion, second.
Second.
Laura makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Are we going to have this leaf truck by the time leaves start falling?
I have it now.
Thank God. Okay.
We're actually moving forward. We're converting an old garbage truck to be able to collect the leaves and still be able to compact it. So we're moving forward. We'll be ready to get leaves when they drop.
As Martha Stewart would say, this is a good thing. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. And maybe, is there any further discussion, counsel? Okay, being no further discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Counsel, thank you very much. Okay, Ronnie?
Yes, thank you again.
Any reports?
All right, so the next one is, you should have one in front of you, of 13,600. This one is also for AC replacement, and this one is at the police department. This would be an unrestricted fund transfer to a capital account for the 13,600 to make those repairs.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this budget amendment?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Rick makes the motion, and Laura makes a second. Is there any further discussion, is any discussion on this motion? Hearing no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Ronnie?
All right. And this is the last one. It should be for $25,000, and you've got two components to this. You have a revenue component and an expense component. And what it is, we're getting $25,000 for overtime in the police department. So in the first section, you have the revenue coming in, and that actually does offset against the same unrestricted fund balance that we were pulling monies from. And that would be a wash, netted to zero. Then we're going to have an expense, but we're going to move that expense from overtime to the other grants expense account for a net balance of zero for both $25,000.
Okay. Thank you, Ronnie. Is there a motion to adopt this budget amendment?
So moved.
Laura makes the motion. Is there a second? And Rick makes a second. Is there any discussion on this motion before we take a vote?
I just wanted to point out for the benefit of the public that $25,000 in overtime sounds like a lot, but that is a grant that they've gotten. So it's completely grant-funded.
Thank you, Laura. Any further discussion or comments?
That's all I had.
Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Laura?
It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Ronnie, any further news you would like to disseminate to the council?
No, that's just Dunson Bolt's accounting. I didn't get into debits and credits, but that's how it'll be show up in the ledger.
Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Okay, now, we are on attorney report, Roman numeral 11. Mike?
I did do some background on Bragg Road, but I'll let that lay for right now. I do have some margin orders for next month, so be ready for the October meeting.
For regarding this?
For a lot that's going on in October.
We have a, we'll have a number of ordinances in front of you in October to be able to talk through enterprise tourism zones and a couple others.
Okay, I thought you meant.
Trying to get that, so we will try to make those as quick as we possibly can.
Yes, yes. Those are important. Thank you.
Mike, may I ask you a question? Is it possible that you can reach out to Erica? I know you just said how busy you're about to be, but can you reach out to Erica within the next two weeks, maybe? Because they've got their meeting at the end of the month, and I let her know you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Mike, what else, my friend? Okay. All right, town manager reports A through J, and then some. Thank you, sir.
So I'll be quick with this. Wanted to bring counsel's attention. We, town staff had removed the remnants of a mobile home on Kent's Ridge. Forgive me for not having the actual address, but it's the remnants. I think we all know where it is. It's right there where you turn onto Kent's. We have removed that and gotten it back to a green space. We will be moving forward to be able to place a lien on that property to be able to cover the cost for that. This is a test case scenario that we're trying to be able to see. Since mobile homes are classified as personal property, it's deemed, it's an unmovable vehicle or irreparable vehicle. So we're going down that road. We will be coming back to you in the near future with some code ordinance to be able to look at other more derelict properties, those that are uninhabitable. We're not looking to be able to come and tell you if you have flecking off of your house that you have code enforcement, but we need to be able to move forward with some of the more egregious properties that we have throughout town because they do, as Mr. Cordell, I believe, was speaking earlier, when you have a dysfunctional property, not only does it have an effect on that property, but it has an effect on those surrounding properties. So we're moving forward with that. We are, next week, going to be moving forward with the polishing of the gym floor in the police department, getting that done. We have moved with basic life service and EMS between rescue and police to be able to get some additional training for those folks. That was completed and shared between those, so that'll allow some of our police officers to be able to have basic life service certifications, to be able to move forward with that. I drove on Oriole Street Bridge today, and so I'm quite pleased about that. That has been a long time coming. They have paved over that. Our town staff did the railing today. We've taken up the gravel in Mr. Cunningham's yard. We're going to be strolling and grass eating that tomorrow. This is a two-lane bridge, so we will have both lanes open going to both sides. So we're very, very pleased to have that done. One of the things that has come to my attention, when we did the bulk and brush fee back several months ago, we put that on every account that we provide service to, so our electric accounts, our water accounts. It's been brought to our attention by a few citizens. They didn't feel like they needed to have that account because they don't, they're not paying for their trash. When we investigated that, they're getting their trash picked up, and they're not being charged for it. So there's going to be some letters that are going to be sent out next week alerting those folks that they have had trash being picked up, and they're not being charged for that, and we're going to be charging them for that going forward. So I want to make both counsel and citizens aware of that. That is, those folks have been receiving their trash being picked up. They just have not been charged for that. So I want to get out ahead of any misinformation and maybe share it around that. My public works team and I and my public safety team are working together right now. The Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program has a due date of the end of October. has a due date of the end of October. We may be bringing a resolution to you at the October meeting to be able to support our application for that. We're working with VDOT and then a consultant to be able to try to get as much money as I possibly can. This will help with pedestrian safety for crosswalks. We're actually looking to be able to install an upgraded crosswalk at the new professional building, given the fact that we will have more tenants and more folks going across between the parking lot and the professional building. We're looking to be able to do sideways speed limit signs, no parking signs, to be able to look at that. It's based upon crash data. We have that crash data, and we, so we are moving forward with that. Rec Park pool pressure, so we have contracted with a consultant. They have come, I believe they're coming tomorrow to be able to go and look to see where, if any, leaks we have in our pool right now, so that we don't have, we, we really did not lose an awful lot of water this past year, and I think there's a report at your diocese to be able to speak to how many visitors we had at the pool. We had a very, very good pool season this year, a number of different parties and a number of different community groups. This will allow us, if we're able to get this fixed, when we go to do the pool project, not to have to do an awful lot of work with our distribution lines. That'll save us money in the long term to be able to do that. Wanted to talk about up ahead. You have, I believe, in, at your diocese, you have a brochure that's gonna be handed out and put on our website and put on our Facebook page. What this is, is an SMX texting, an SMS texting feature. What will happen is, is we will send a welcome text out to everyone that we have an account, have a phone number on their utility account. This will allow them to opt in to start receiving text messages from the town. When we have events at the Greenway stage, when we have power outages, when we are trying to communicate with our citizens, when we close for snow, when, when we have other events that are happening, this will allow us to be able to disseminate that information directly to citizens. It will also allow citizens to be able to respond back to us. So if they have a pothole on Henderson, they will text "pothole", it will be prompted to say where that pothole is, and then they can provide that. It timestamps that, and then we will be able to respond back to it once that pothole is done. This is a way for us to be able to get away from Facebook into a place where we can be able to directly interact with our citizens and be able to understand where there may be issues, and for us to be able to disseminate to citizens. So if we have a power outage and it's only in one section, we can literally go on a map, draw a circle around where that section is, send the text messages out to just that area, so that if it's not affecting you, you don't get a text message and get alarmed that your power's getting ready to go out. We're moving forward with that. It should be, started to be disseminated tomorrow. We wanted to be able to get through this evening meeting to be able to provide that information directly to council. We are almost at a point where we're getting ready to go live with an iWorks software program. This is something the county uses. This creates work orders. Right now, oftentimes, you on the council get, a citizen will come to you and say, "I've called to be able to get my bulk and brush, and I've called seven times." Well, quite frankly, that's hyperbole. Nobody calls me seven times. After they call me once, maybe twice, they start to call you. And so they've not called seven times. But what it does right now is it puts my ladies at the front in the customer service at a disadvantage, because if we get that, there's not really a way for us to timestamp when that, when that request was received, or to be able to disseminate back to the citizen when it's completed. This system will allow that. It will take that, we're looking to be able to create a kiosk at our customer service desk up front, so that folks, when they come in to pay their bill, if there's a pothole on their street, they can go and put the pothole, be able to GPS it where it is on their road, and that starts a work order. Once that work order is completed, they will be notified of the completion of that. If it requires multiple departments, say it's a pothole and an electric line that's not going, once the pothole is completed, Public Works will notify them, and once the electric department makes their repairs to it, they will be again notified. And so I have the ability to track these, and I will be able to provide reports about how long it takes us to close work orders. So we're very excited about this. These are two ways that we can interact with citizens, to be able to get work orders, to be able to understand where there may be deficiencies or things that we need to do as a staff, and then for us to be able to timestamp that and be able to come back to you and tell you how long it takes us to fill a pothole request. So we're excited about both of those going live. The last thing is something or other that's been brought up by many, several of you on the, the diocese, and that is Henderson Street. We are getting ready to order and put in place four-way stops at each of the intersections going down Henderson Street. We've done some speed work out there, and what we see from our folks in our police department is that there's not a lot of speeding. What you have is, again, the built environment. The houses are very close to the road, so when you drive 25 miles an hour down that road, it feels like if somebody passed you, they're driving 45 miles an hour. They're not, but they're very close to you. So what we're doing is we're putting three-way stops at each of those intersections. That prevents anybody from getting up to a speed at that point. Even if they roll through the stop sign, they've slowed down enough to be able to not get a ticket, but also to be able to stop them from getting to that speed. We are also working right now, my, my folks in my police department are getting ready to disseminate information. We're gonna be putting no parking on one side. There is off-street parking available for each of those residences along Henderson, so we are gonna be placing no parking along that. This is our proof of concept. We want to be able to move forward with this particular section of town, because we've gotten a number of complaints around this. We are going to be coming back and looking at Hidden Valley and a couple of other spaces to be able to look at four-way stop improvements, because the data will tell you that putting four-way stops in, it reduces your speed. And this is where I don't, as I said, I think with last meeting or the meeting before last, what we don't want to do is we don't want to create conflict between citizens and my police department. I don't want everybody to be wondering what, we don't want to be known as a speed trap town. We, we want to make sure that we have good collaborative working relationships between citizens and the police, and we don't want everybody to be getting a speeding ticket. Look, if you're doing 45 down Front Street, you know, you're probably gonna get a speeding ticket. But if you're doing 35, what I want to be able to do is to be able to talk about what the built environment is. Why are we building roads that lead people to go this fast when we could be able to change how that's set up? So this will be our first test case for this. We plan on bringing some information back to council, probably in the next three months, to be able to get some comments from the individuals. We've put rumble strips, we've done a couple of other things. That really hasn't worked, and, and so this is the next step in this iteration that we want to be able to go through. That's everything I have for this evening. I'm more than happy to answer any additional questions.
Jason, I think that sounds like a possible solution, and we certainly hope that helps the residents. And there are numerous streets and rich lands which are narrow, and when you go down them, it feels fast, and it is true. So thank you. Any questions for Jason, members of council?
Did you mention when the signs, the four-way signs will go in on Henderson?
Believe that we are trying to get those put in place this week, so it should be in the next couple of days.
I have a call on Henderson this week as well. I just wanted to find that.
The good news is, there won't be anybody parking on there, and these four-way signs, that's just gonna clear up that whole area. I think it's a fantastic idea. Commend you.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jason, very much. Okay, we're now moving on to Roman numeral 13. Council member reports. Laura?
I just wanted to point out the significance of what the police department has done this week with the EMS training. This not only benefits the town of Ridge Plains, but a lot of people don't realize that we're running EMS to just about the entire western part of Tazza County, so basically from here, just about to the golf course on the foreline. And this is, this is big for the entire part of the western end of the county, and also helped us last year in getting more funding from the county, and I would like to be involved in that discussion next time, because I think it will help doing that again. Other than that, I, every time, I've said, I say it every month, but every time I have a citizen concern that I pass on to you, it's taken care of by the council meeting one way or another, so I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, very much. Jan?
I don't have anything, because I got a couple calls from Henderson Street, and I'm hoping this four-way sign will take care of it. That's the only thing I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Jordan?
Same. I have no complaints this time. I will say soccer kicks off next week, or next Tuesday, September 17. I believe they have around 200 kids last time I spoke with them, so go out and watch them, support your youth. The town also has volleyball registration and basketball registration open currently. Volleyball registration is running from the 1st September to the beginning of October. Come out and get registered. And we also have our basketball open from beginning of September all the way through December, so come out, have fun.
Jordan, thank you. Rick?
I don't have, everything that I've brought to Mr. May's attention is taken care of. The one thing that I'm excited about is us getting to rent the Greenway Park finally.
Yeah.
At that stage, that is set there for so long. I mean, I know we've used it a little bit, but now maybe it will finally get used like we've all thought for five years now it was gonna get used. So thank you, Jason, for working on that and getting that up to where we can rent it and use it now. Thank you. That's all I have, there.
Thank you, Rick. Gary?
Yeah, I have one, Mayor. A family reached out to me and sent me a message, which I know them. They're from Russell County. They had an incident a few weeks back here in town. They come in for dinner, but they just want to say thank you to 911, Neil Turley, for his patience, kindness, and respect that they felt from him. They just wanted it to be recognized.
Thank you, Gary. Anything else? Okay, Seth?
Yes, Mr. May, I have one. Jason and I discussed this a few weeks ago. The, and I don't know, maybe you can update me as I'm going forward with this, but currently our policy on adding businesses on demand, on electric, is that if you have two months of consecutive 2,500 kilowatt usage, then that triggers a demand. Now, the problem with that is, is that that policy was probably set 30 years ago, 40 years ago, a long time ago. But as we continue to increase, everything that we use is electric. So what happens in the colder months, like some of the months that we've had, December, January of last year, those temperatures dip way low, and as your heat pump gets older, it triggers the, you know, the emergency heat, and you're burning electricity a lot faster than normal. So I have one case, a lady called me, and she literally used one month 2,504 kilowatts. So she got triggered into a demand. Well, when I took her bill, her current bill at that time, I think it was August, and I calculated it, her usage with the demand on there made her pay like 56 cents a kilowatt, which is ridiculous. So what I like to bring up, and I don't know if we can do, you know, how we can do this, but the proposal that Jason and I discussed was that we change it to 3,500 kilowatts, and we make it three consecutive months before demand is added to you. So I guess my question is, can I do this with a simple vote tonight? It's a policy, not a rate thing. Or what do I need to do, Mike?
I think it's actually in the code of ordinances, if I'm not mistaken.
Damn it. Seth, I have had similar calls.
Well, we're fixing this, because I'm, I'm telling you right now, I'd really just like to eliminate demand on certain classifications of businesses, but this is in the interim. This will eliminate demand on people who are using office space and different things like that. It's ridiculous. And so without me getting furious and just lobbying for us to eliminate demand completely tonight, which I would love to do, tell me how we can fix this, Mike, quickly. What can we do?
And my apologies, this is one that we, I was aware of, and we just did not get to.
I know you got a lot going on.
I've alerted Mike about this. This is on one of the emails that I send him to, to be able to, to gain an understanding around this, but I'll defer to Mike.
Can I piggyback on, on that as well?
Sure.
So in tandem of that, could we offer incentives to get people like to update? Because I know AEP offers, for instance, if I put a smart thermostat in, it's, if it has to be automated, that's the key. Now, sometimes certain power companies say they want access to it. I do not think we need to do that. But if we could offer an incentive, I think that would also hedge us from the future, because right now 3,500 seems a lot, but 10 years from now, it's probably gonna be the same. So is that something we could also look at? I don't think it's gonna be as quick as an impact, but how many buildings do we have in town that this would impact? 20?
So what happened was, in this last round, when the lady who called me, when she called me, I think there was multiple that were in that same scenario. But you have to look at, what, what did we just have? We had record cold temperatures in that 12-month period. So my point with all this is, I, I feel like that, you know, Mike, is there a way that we could pass an emergency? Like, can I make an emotion to, you know, give Jason emergency powers to change this policy or something? Because it's something, and I'm, but I'm glad it just come up, and I, and like I told her, we can't fix these things unless they come to our attention and, and you bring, and you shine a light on it. Because nothing, you don't know about this stuff until it happens, and then when it happens, we have to address it. You know, and I'm not blaming anybody in here. They're just do, they're just following the black and white, you were over, but you know, you're over four kilowatts, and that's, that's the problem. So, okay, you're over four kilowatts, now we punish you, and you pay 56 cents a kilowatt. I mean, that's not what we intended that for.
I'll come in. I'll come in. I personally know how that feels, and that was a long time ago, when I had my business. But demand somehow seems inherently hurtful and wrong. I too wish we could do away with it. That being said, I'm thinking your request is to do it immediately. I don't disagree, but I'm waiting for him to, so we can use the proper techniques.
Absolutely.
And if, in fact, it can't be done tonight, it, once he researches this, he's checking it out, we could even have a special meeting for that by one, one objective, so we don't make a legal mistake. I'm just trying to think of that. And I have had several calls, one in particular of someone who wants to rent a building, and it is a drawback for her.
The, one thing I will say while Mike's looking that up, is that in our discussions, we would like to, if we're able to, or however we're able to be able to remedy this. The thing, because I've had a couple of, of calls around this as well. One of the things I would ask counsel is, is that, given the fact that this is a policy that you're gonna change, we would ask that it be retroacted back to July 1. That way, what we've, what we've said to the customers that have, that this has affected, is please pay your bill, because I want to make sure that nobody gets into turmoil with paying their bill, and that once it's remedied, the town would go back, because it's not a large number of people that are being affected by this, but it's large enough to cause headaches for those that it is. But what we want to be able to do is to retroactively go back, be able to update this based on July. Then anything that they've paid in addition, above and beyond what they would have been charged normally, would just be placed onto their account as a credit.
Yes.
So that would be the only thing that I would want to add to this, is that we've asked those folks, and to a T, at least in my conversations, everyone has been amenable to being able to pay their bill, even with the higher charge where they are right now, because I don't want anybody to not pay their bill, get a late fee, or get a penalty or anything else, and then I get into a weird, wonky world where I, I don't, I just want to go down that road. They've all have, have gone in, have come in and paid their bills. They're up to date to everybody that I'm aware of, but I want to make sure that we get them whole on the back end of this as well.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Seth, I'm glad you brought it up. That was gonna be in my comments. We can cover this topic now.
Given the fact that Mike's gonna try to look this up, could I make a suggestion? And if counsel's amenable to it, that we look to hold a special meeting one week from this evening? That gives Mike the ability to be able to look at it.
Let me look at the schedule, my personal, to make sure.
When I found that it is in, it is in the code of ordinances.
Okay.
It should be a pretty easy fix. I mean, obviously, it's, that's how we change the ordinance, which, you know, if they're already on a demand, I don't know if there's a way to, to take it back, but I know how we can fix it, you know, in the future.
Can you have that, I will not be here next week, because I didn't know we were gonna have a special meeting.
Seth, when will you be here? I'd like you to be here.
The 20, I'll be back in town on the 27th.
Friday?
Yes.
That's not a good Friday for me, sorry.
We get to the 30th or the 1st of October.
I'm good, the 30th of September. How about other folks? I know we want to make it as fast as possible, but obviously, and you're right, we need.
Well, and the key, and the key is, we're getting it retroactive, which is good, but we do need, the quicker we do it, the better that's gonna be.
I totally agree with that. It, no matter how it is, because I've been on the end of, as many people in business have been, of a demand fee, it doesn't, it not just feels, it feels like it's wrong, like you're being treated poorly. It never, you, you can't justify it to people. There is no justification.
I feel like if we, I think for, for this is a short-term fix to a longer problem. That, but I think in the long-term solution to this is us to look at that certain people would, certain classifications of business would be immediately exempted. So I think it, it's gonna have to do with what type of business are you operating? Obviously, some things are going to use, you know, we have industrial clients in this town. We have people who, you know, who are large users, things like that. I think in that situation, you know, and that may come with a square I think in that situation, you know, and that may come with a square footage thing as well. Like even if you, if you're operating retail space, but it's under X amount of square footage, you, you may not be subject to that. But someone who has maybe 10,000 square feet, that may be different, because you're operating, you know, multiple heat pumps. But that's for a longer discussion, but I think if we can address this with a special meeting, you know, and then maybe follow it up.
And that would give Mike time to really do some research. May I ask, council, look at your calendar and see how Monday, September the 30th looks.
It'd be quick.
Are you, you can't do that. Gary, what, how about the next day, October 1st? I'm just. When will you be back?
On the 30th, so I'll be back on that Friday.
The 4th?
The 4th.
Well.
Then we're two days away from having a meeting.
Could you zoom? We, the council could allow that.
Y'all looked at the week of the 23rd, 4th, and 25th?
That's, I'm going to be going that way.
I, and I realize we are trying to synchronize.
But I could probably zoom in if you needed me to.
You can zoom if, I mean, this is quite a possibility, and I, I think this is of such importance. We don't want to wait too long, but we need to give him time to really research. When, what, Seth, going back to the week of the 23rd, and let's make sure everybody can do this. I don't, what would be an evening you could zoom?
That's fine. 23rd, 24th, whichever.
Gary, will you be here on the 23rd? How about you, Rick? Jordan?
I'm looking.
Okay, make sure, Jan? We're just tentatively.
23rd, 24th, either one.
Okay, 23rd or 24th. Could you zoom either way, Seth?
Yes. I just need to know, so I can schedule around it.
Absolutely. I'm thinking our regular meeting time, 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Laura, does 23rd or, Gary, who was it that was questionable?
Man, I got, I'm good. 23rd I can do.
All right, so let me have a little.
Just a quick thing. I typically have a meeting on the 4th Monday of the month.
Okay.
Unless you all, I mean, if.
Well, let's see if we can accommodate. How about the 24th? Make sure, I mean, I'm trying to be congenial here.
I'm fine with that.
Are you, can you do that? Are you, can you zoom?
I'll zoom in, yeah.
How about you, Gary? Are you available on the 24th?
Yeah.
And Rick, are you available on, are you available on the 24th?
I'll be there.
How about you, Jan? Laura? So council, by consensus, can we land on the 24th of September at 6 o'clock? And those who cannot be here, we can zoom, and we'll make all the necessary and proper arrangements. That's the necessary and proper clause. 6 o'clock. To the Constitution.
And is the desire to go from 25 to 35 in three months?
Yes, sir. That's the general consensus here.
Okay.
We'll wait for your input, your, we need your.
Well, I found, I found that code provision, so I think that would be the, the two changes that we need to make, and what I'll try to do is send that prior to everybody through an email, just so you can read it, just to make sure that's what you're looking for.
And I'll come and sign this document as soon as you have it ready for me to call a special meeting.
Okay.
The 24th, let me put it in my calendar, okay?
Would it be possible to get the electric department to give us a, like, breakdown of the benefits of the demand? I don't think I'm completely on board removing it from this level, but I would just like to know overall, like, for instance, I presume the larger manufacturers in town need it.
I mean, frankly, I don't really care, because what, like, the, this is not going to affect manufacturing.
Agreed, agreed. I would just like to know for background knowledge, like, why?
It's a legitimate question.
I worked to be able to give.
I didn't mean I didn't care about your question. I don't care about.
I know, I know.
I wasn't attacking you, Jordan. I just, I just.
We're doing it.
You know, this is just something that has been, like, any brothers that have been around and been involved for a long time, this is a recurring theme. It's affected the mayor and his business. It's affected many, it's affected other people.
It feels like when you get your bill, and it's a thousand bucks, and they ask more.
Yeah.
And I think, dear God, I paid it. How many shirts do I have to sell?
I have to kind of, just to back him up on saying he doesn't care. I don't know if you were here yet. You weren't, you weren't here yet. Rick and I had just been appointed, and we had a similar situation. A resident actually got kicked onto a demand meter, and.
I remember it.
The town manager at the time, not Mr. May, the town manager at the time in this open meeting said, if I could put every resident on a demand meter, I would, because we make so much more money off of it. And I was like, I was like, no.
I mean, and I think that's why, it's a long-term solution for us that certain classifications of business, absolutely no resident should ever be on a demand meter.
Agreed.
I can assure you, there had been residents on it, but.
Oh, we know that, yes. I'm just saying it should not happen.
Yeah.
You know, we, we can rectify errors of the past.
Agreed.
And, and I think that, and also, and I don't mean to just say everybody, everything was wrong, because 30 years ago, 2,500 kilowatts was an extreme amount of electricity.
Yeah.
Every appliance that we use, everything that we use now is.
The world's different, and I want to comment too, sometimes, and I know how it feels. It's easy for all of us, me included, to look back and say, my God, they should have done that. We weren't in their shoes, and we didn't have the, we don't have the economy now. We had then.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Seth?
Nope, that was all I had.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else for council reports before I give mine? Do you need a break? Want to do a break?
Keep rolling.
I'm waiting. Okay, shall we? Okay. I have several things. First, we have a request in the Blue Tornado Bamboozers for support for a equipment they have, and I put it here so everybody can see it, and Susan is going to let them know of our policy of helping, that it needs to be in advance, okay? Not that we wouldn't, but it's supposed to be scheduled based on our current policy. Next, hold on. Next, Susan, our Susan, asked me to talk about some of the events that are coming up, so I'm happy to do that, and this is a long list. I'm not going to do all that, but I will mention what's happening in September and October, but we won't go into all the details, but just very quickly, and this is published. I think this is the most up-to-date one. Saturday, September 21st is when we have the Richlands, I'll call it Festival. Richlands Flavor and Music Festival, the Battle of the Bands at Greenway Park from 2:00 to 10:00, Front Street in Suffolk, and I have worked with Keisha, as have other citizens and elected people, to help get some of this going. I think we have several bands. I can't remember how many, six, I think? Almost eight. So it's going to be a lot of fun, and we have, I think she said, well, I don't have this in writing. I talked to this afternoon. We have events for young people. I don't want to put an age limit on it, because we're all kids at heart, and I would hope. And so that will be on Suffolk, and then the bands will be at the Greenway. And at the Section House, we will be, they ask us to roast marshmallows, which is perfect. And we will also be having Sean White, who will be cooking outside, hopefully, at the Section House, serving his award-winning chili. It's not a fundraiser, just come and get some chili and roast some marshmallows. So it's a wonderful opportunity for people to be involved in Richlands and all the town activities that we can have. Okay, next, I'm just reviewing this, in October, and I'll do this again in October. See, our meeting will be, pass some of this, and on Saturday, October 5th, listed here on this schedule of events is the Tornado Alley Soapbox Rally. Shannon Nelson is the contact, that's at VNV. Saturday, October 12th, there's Kids Safety Day, that's at the Police Department. A couple of biggies here. There's a gnat. It's one of those Richlands gnats. They're like that cats. Jason, he knows. I tease him a lot on this, and I'll tell you how, and he deserves it, all right? You have to take it. So here we are. It's okay. Friday, October 18th, is the Haunted Trail. That'll be at Crittiville. It's being sponsored completely by the Tasman Canyon Chamber, so that's a good thing. And on Saturday, October the 19th, there is a car show by the Richlands Fire and Rescue. That's at the Police Department. And Saturday, October the 19th, also, so we're having our Fall Festival, and that's going to be a lot of fun. I won't go into details. We'll have time to cover that in on our Facebook page, and hopefully a website someday in time. And because we need it, and we all know that, no news here. Also, Saturday, October 19th, is Truck or Treat at the Police Department, and that's always a, a really big deal, because we help so many people, and they have fun. And they're introduced to our police departments, so people are not afraid of the police, but feel comforted of them. All right, next, Saturday, October 19th, Haunted Historic Ghost Walking Tour. I'm going to tell you what, and it says here, and I, we've been working on this, starting and ending at the historic Reverend Section Foreman's house. We have some exterminator, please, and so I'm requesting unofficially, please understand. Now, it's okay, and so it really, nothing historic about it, because the story's going to be pretty much, one of them is true. We're making up ours at the Section House. It'll be really good. We're writing it already. It's not the idea to scare the bejesus out of somebody, but to get really close. And so we hope there will be a lot of participants. The reason it's called historic, it'll start at the Section House, it'll go, I think this is the route. Don't hold me to it, to the cart building, to the library, and to, they said, the Farm Bureau. Okay, I think that's the route. Is that right? And there'll be guides walking people through town, da-da-da-da-da, and it's going to be fun. So I hope everybody will come to that, you know, and it's enjoyable. And these are events that make Richlands, Richlands, and give not only our citizens, but everyone, an opportunity to come here and have fun in Richlands. All right, and then that evening, October the 19th, we're, the town is going to be showing the movie Beetlejuice at the Greenway Center, and we'll have popcorn and glow sticks, and everybody loves them. That's from 9:00 to 11:00. And the Haunted Trail for in town, no, 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 no. The haunted walking tour in town is for, I think something's crazy here. No, it's, it's good. No, there's a mistake. Let's look at the, here. It says, I just read this. October 18th is the Haunted Trail, and you go to it for the chamber, and down here, it says, October 19th is the Haunted Trail. We need to find out.
I think they're doing it multiple days.
Is that what that is, two nights?
Yes, sir. They're doing it on Friday and Saturday night.
My mistake. Okay. So anyway, thank you. So that is, anyway, the Historic Ghost Walking Tour is what it's being called, would be a lot of fun. And then Beetlejuice is that evening, the movie. And then Thursday, October 24th, is the Richlands Homecoming Parade in Pep Rally. I guess it begins and ends at the parade at the Police Department. And then October 25th, again, is the Haunted Trail by the Chamber of Commerce. And then just October, we have the Globe Worm 5K Benefiting Communities and School, and Charity Hurst is organizing that. That will be at Crittiville. And if you're not familiar with the communities and schools, they do a lot of really good work for students. Then again, October 26th is the Haunted Trail at Crittiville, and October 26th is the Scary Movie Night, A Quiet Place. October 31st, of course, we voted on that, is Trick or Treat here in Richlands. So I wanted to make that, make everybody aware of that. And Susan, if I missed any, missed anything, please correct me. I, I didn't mind if we're having those three haunted trails at Crittiville, but it's fine. And I think each of you, did you guys get these, these at your, in your packet or whatever? They were laying here. This is the Town of Richlands Battle of the Band, and there's another one. So that is my report. Other things, I too, here's the one, the Great Richlands Flavor and Music Festival. The music will be at the Greenway, the flavor will be in the chili at the Section House. And it's award-winning chili. How many awards has he been? He's won three awards, independent, I mean, independent tasters. I was not a taster, and I'm, I think I should be. Thank you. I couldn't be. Thank you so much, council. I think we're at a place. Does anyone else have anything else to say before we, and do remember 9/11 tomorrow, okay? In your hearts. Are we ready to go into executive session? Is there a motion to go into executive session for Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 Personnel and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 Teen Venture?
So moved.
Laura makes the motion. Gary makes a second. Is there any discussion on going into closed session? There being no discussion, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. We shall go into our conference room.
And Laura?
Thank you. We shall go into our conference room.
The Richlands Town Council is now back in session. Is there a motion to return to open session?
I'm waiting for a motion.
The motion is made by Rick Wood and seconded by Jim Y. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, Seth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Jordan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Now, is there a motion to certify that nothing was discussed in this executive session other than Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 Personnel, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8